Welcome to the Acton, Town of Acton Planning Board Training Meeting Workshop. What's the date today?
It's April 28th at 6:01.
I'll stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on up, Mr. Feldman. Have a seat.
I'll just go over here.
All right.
One here. Oh, thanks. That way I can see you.
Evening. How you guys doing this evening?
Good. Thanks for coming out.
No problem. Absorb all that information I gave you last time.
Yeah.
So I thought I'd start this evening. I know that Jason fed me some questions or issues that you want to talk about, but I thought, one of the things that I noticed with your application booklet, am I, am I to assume that applicants get this?
No, they haven't really. Some of them, I will give them a, I will give them an email. If they're asking, well, you know, a lot of people will say, hey, well, what do I need to do? So I will provide them pretty much with that whole checklist and say, this is, this is some of the criteria that the planning board will be, will be reviewing in the process.
All right.
I'll not, I'll, will pertain to it, but just be prepared to answer some of these.
All right. No, good. It's good. I mean, I, I like it and I know it's costly and whatnot to redo these types of things, but if, if you can give an applicant this type of booklet,
Yeah.
that would be great. The information as it is by itself is, is good as well. So the only thing that I, I found that if you ever have time to make a little better, I know time is not always that easy to find.
Right now.
Yeah. Tell me about it. But in the conditional use checklist, you have 6.6, 3.4 review procedures and public hearing. And those are all the standards that you would be using to make your findings a fact when you approve an application. And in your conditional use one, your checklist says yes, no, and not applicable. And I think that's really good. I like that. One thing that, that you might be able to do to, to really finish that off is if you're making a specific finding, is maybe in between A, B, C, D, et cetera down there, you put in a couple of lines, just so if you need to write something in, and that becomes the official finding of fact record, so that someone doesn't have to rewrite the whole finding of fact. But the thing that kind of puzzled me, and maybe, maybe someone can, can fill me in, was that you don't have that same layout in your site plan review or subdivision application. And I think it would be really helpful because you're, I'm assuming, I haven't, I haven't gone, well, actually, I have gone back and looked at the ordinance a little bit, but, that, excuse me, that your, that your procedures, review procedures would be a little different in site plan review and subdivision. And if you laid it out the same exact way, so that when you're ready to approve a project, you can go through all of those one by one and just say yea, nay, or not applicable. And somehow, somewhere, and I don't know whether it was because other people may have developed other processes.
Right.
It kind of got lost in there. And if you can fix that, that would, that would be a big help to you guys down the road. But I mean, I, I like this. Not every town does this, but this is really helpful and useful. So.
So, let me make sure I'm understanding you. So
Yeah.
A plethora of information required to make the decision in the site plan.
Correct.
And it's laid out paragraph after paragraph, but the difference is we don't have the
Yes, no.
Yea, no, and.
Where, where you, excuse me. Yes, I still have that cough. I get it this time of the year, every year, and it, it's, I don't know if it's allergies or what, but there are times I completely lose my voice, so I apologize.
See, same.
You, you are, you have standards in here that you're using to, to grant your approval on. And the standards that you're using for conditional use are those ones that are in 6.6, 3.4, your review procedures. Because those are the types of statements, if you will, or findings that you need to make as you review a project. And what I, what I didn't find was that in the site plan review or the subdivision portion of it, that you had that same format laid out. And I just think that would be really helpful for you if you can get that laid out.
Yeah.
It will certainly make it easier for you guys as you get ready to approve or deny an application, so that you have all of that information right, right there in front of you, and you can check it off, and that becomes the official record.
So do you feel like we could use the same standards that we have for conditional use for site plan review?
Well, you're going to have different standards, at least in subdivision. I'm not sure. I'll have to go back and check your site plan review section of the ordinance, but your subdivision standards, you're definitely going to have different ones.
6, 4, 6, 6, 4, 7 are all the standards that we go through. And I'm in, on site plan review.
Right. It does take a long time to read those all out.
Right. And they're all yes, no, not applicable.
So I'll just, we'll just spend, I'll spend some time.
Four of nine.
Oh, conditional.
Yeah. Site plan.
Site plan review. So I'll just spend some time, or I'll have Ashley spend some time, and we'll just reformat this and make some new books. And then when the applicant comes in.
And when you, when, when you do your findings, you, you don't have to read all of this verbatim. I know some towns that have done that, and you can sit there for hours. You don't have to. You know, you can just read the statement. For example, I'm on 6.6473, access into the site. You can just read vehicular access to and from the development must be safe and convenient. Yes, no, or the, the specific issue or issues that are going, are going to come up are if you're going to deny something, because you need to make a finding as to why you're denying something. So 99% of the time, you're going to be approving it. You just need to read the, the statement on what section you're in, and then yes, no, or not applicable. And then the board takes a poll and says, you know, yes. I have one.
Oh, so wait a minute. So you said, yes, read it, but you started that comment by saying you don't need to read it.
No, I'm saying you don't need to read, for example, under 6.6, 7.4, 3, you don't need to read all of this sub-information. You just need to read that piece right there.
Just access into the state, uh, site, and then it's yes, no, going down?
Safe and convenient. And then I guess if we have to find a reason for deny, we would look at the rest of them.
Correct.
I mean, we, we would have already looked at that.
Yeah, you've already, you've already weighed that.
Too, so I guess we just pointed out if we have an issue with it.
Right.
Right. Yeah, the only, the only time you would need to look at any of that sub-category and read it is if you were going to deny an application on one of those sub-standards. But otherwise, you just need to read the introductory piece that lays out all of that other stuff.
So introduce it, and they're all yes or not applicable, and move on.
Correct. Correct. It can help shorten things up.
Yeah.
And. And yeah, absolutely. And someone won't get, you know, dry mouth from having to read every single, every single one and vote on every single one. It's not necessary. Yeah. Yeah.
I think you read the longest one.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, since we're talking about conditional uses and site plan review, so if you have an applicant that comes in and their, their project, the scope of their project is very large, but in our ordinance, they're held to conditional use, can you still pull in, hold some of the site plan review criteria to that, because it's more detailed? So, I mean, I can get into this with greater detail if I, if you need, but can you, can you still hold them to some of the conditions that are in the site plan review, or do you, are you only allowed to go by site plan, uh, conditional use?
If, so, that's a loaded question.
Because sometimes it's more, you need more information to determine that, and to go into your site plan review checklist would be.
Right. So.
I guess we're kind of asking like, you have a use that in the land use chart is conditional use.
Yep.
But the, the use is maybe a little more diffused than your usual use. They have mul, you know, maybe multiple uses in the same site. Can we pull in site plan review without it being in the land use chart for their use?
The easy answer is no. If it says conditional use, then that's what you follow. If it says site plan review, that's what you follow. One of the things that I do with a lot of the towns when I've amended ordinances is sometimes some of the town ordinances get fairly complicated. And you've got conditional uses, and you've got all your criteria, and you've got site plan reviews and all your criteria. And so simplified, what I, what I do with some of the towns that are amenable to it is I just put a statement in the ordinance that says all conditional uses are site plan reviews. Then you get to use both sets of performance standards to review the application. Because if it's a conditional use, it still has to go through site plan review. But not all ordinances are set up that way, and law is not set up to accommodate that unless your ordinance says that. So the easy answer.
All conditional uses are subject to site plan review?
Correct.
At the board's discretion or something?
Nope.
Just, just in general, and then you can, you can waive certain parts of it of site plan review if you don't need it in that type of situation?
The applicant would need to request waivers of certain submission information, and then you would need to vote to determine whether or not that waiver is applicable. So there's also two levels there that I always emphasize with all of the boards that I work with, is that if it's in the checklist and they haven't requested a waiver and they submit the information, then it's been submitted. This is, now we're moving to a completeness issue. It's been submitted. That doesn't mean that it meets the satisfactory level that you folks feel you need for information. But what it does is it gets the application to a point of, yes, it's complete. Now you're going to get into debate with the applicant about, yep, you submitted, you know, let's talk traffic impact study. I heard, you know, that word earlier, so it's close to my brain right now. That doesn't mean they've provided enough information for you, but they have submitted it. So it gets the application off the schneid. You can find the application complete, and then you can say, but we're not satisfied with the information that we've gotten. You need to provide us more.
I want to go back to what you said about making a statement, I guess in the definition of condit, conditional use, that all conditional uses subject to site plan review.
Yep.
And I don't understand how that can work in operation. I mean, now, now you've just essentially eliminated the conditional use thing, and everybody's going to go by the more detailed site plan review, whether they need to or not.
No. It just, it just pulls in the site plan review process. So it's a conditional use. So in most towns, the way it would operate is if you have a permitted use, then it's permitted. 99% of the time, it's permitted, so it just goes to Jason as the code officer, and he can sign a permit, and they can be on their way. You have conditional uses that are uses that, you know, they may, they may be a, like, for example, a higher, more intense home occupation. So it's not just a home occupation that Jason ought to be signing off on, but you guys need to see something in front of the board, and that's a conditional use. And then there's more intense uses that require full site plan reviews with stormwater and grading, and, you know, making sure setbacks are all met, and traffic impact studies, and, and everything. You, you don't need a lot of that if you're use, if you're looking at it as a conditional use. But you are going to need it if you're requiring it to go to site plan review. And the applicant still has the ability to request waivers if it's a conditional use that, geez, you know, you don't need to provide us a grading plan because you're not doing anything relevant to changing parking or anything like that that's going to require regrading or stormwater. They can request waivers of that, and you can grant waivers of that, so they never have to submit all that information. So it, it's a tiered system.
Yeah, it seems like a broad brush. I'm just, it, it just, for, for a normal conditional use that, as you're describing, we don't need 99% or even 100% of what the extra stuff the site plan calls for, we're forced into issuing waivers for 90% of the stuff. It just seems to me that there might be a more discreet way to do that, be able to bring it in.
So, yeah, I don't know if it's helpful or not. I can provide Jason with a, the checklist that we use with a number of our towns. Probably the town that's the most detailed with this sort of thing is Agunkwit. Agunkwit, I mean, they look at every single thing. But the checklist we use is one that, for example, they come in, they meet with Jason before they even prepare their stuff, and he'll go through the list, and he'll, he'll say, yes, you need to provide this, yes, you need to provide this. He can say, that's not applicable to this. He can help make that determination for the applicant. But then one of them is that he can say, you can request a waiver. And so a lot of stuff gets checked off on that. And then the applicant, what we do with a lot of, with a lot of the communities is have a form, and we require the applicant to fill out that form and say what they're requesting a waiver of and why they're requesting it, so that it's on the record that, you know, they're saying, we're requesting a waiver of a stormwater study because we're not doing any regrading on the site. Then you've got something in front of you to, to judge your determination to grant it or not grant it. It makes, it makes the paperwork a little more heavy on the front end, but it saves you legally on the back end.
Well, we can't do it now because it's not in the ordinance.
Well, the checklist isn't an ordinance thing, so you can do the checklist.
No, no, I mean, the definition.
Right.
Conditional uses are.
Right. That's right. You would need to amend your ordinance to say, state that, if you chose to even do that.
But also feels like it could go the other way, where we have something that is site plan review, but some of the conditions in our conditional use review, like referencing, is it compatible with the comprehensive plan? That's not in site plan review.
It should be.
It is somewhere, is it?
No, no, I'm saying it should be.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I mean.
That's a finding, that's a finding you should make for conditional uses, site plan reviews, and subdivision.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I'm, okay. Because sometimes I, I feel like we can get just as far with the conditional use checklist as the site plan review checklist, because it has a lot of leeway for, for us. We just have to be informed as to what decisions we want to make. Whereas the site plan review kind of spells it out, like exactly how they want the parking lot to look with the.
Well, the site plan.
20 spaces.
Right. Again, that's the difference, because a conditional use is something that, excuse me, is on the, on the scale, the weighted scale, it's a little bit higher than just allowing the code officer to give a permit, but it doesn't require the level of detail that you need if you're going to site plan review.
Yeah.
Site plan review is the site plan review of an application that has, you know, grading and parking and, and stormwater and, you know, impacts to neighbors where screening is required. That's, that's the site plan, and that's when you would require a site plan review.
Yeah. Yeah. Good things for us to discuss at workshops and.
Yeah, and, and, and don't be overwhelmed. I mean, your ordinance is not a bad ordinance. It's just, there are things you could do to tweak it if you wanted to.
Right. Well, no, I think that they're good suggestions. It's, it's hard to come up with how you change it when you're just looking.
I didn't find it.
Sometimes, I mean, like.
Sure.
I mean, I feel like some, sometimes I'd like to hunt through conditional use and site plan review, because I feel like, you know, like I was saying, that there's something missing from each one.
Yep. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just more review.
Yep.
I don't remember which one we were struggling with. The question came up as to whether the word ordinance referred to that particular number in the ordinance, or does it refer to ordinance as book?
Which, where is that?
Yeah, I can find that particular one. I have to remember that we were all looking at it.
Yeah.
And Bernie brought it up, you know, what is it? Is it a particular number, or is it the book?
Normally, it refers to the book as the ordinance. Usually, you don't refer to a particular section as an ordinance. You would refer to it as section 6.6, 3.8, within the body of whatever language you have, or whatever the section is that you're referencing.
It was in a section that said something to the effect of, you know, as pertained to this ordinance.
That would usually, that wording is usually about this ordinance.
The book.
Yes.
Because it was, it was something specific about a section.
Yep.
Of, or let's just say, building a deck or something. And would that pertain, that pertain to a resource protection ordinance? You know, would it be the same? So you answered my question. It meant the ordinance.
Right. And if it were a different ordinance, for example, if your resource protection zone standards were in a separate shoreline zoning book, then it should state within the shoreline zoning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So, moving into another area, unless you want to stay with just some general questions, it's up to you. As I mentioned, Jason sent me along some subject areas or issues to talk about, and I can certainly start to weave my way through that. I'm sure it will raise other questions for you as well, so. Okay?
It was just, Chris had asked me some, you know, he wanted to, you know, everybody's role.
Absolutely.
Situation, his role, my role, you know, vice president, vice chair.
Yep.
Do we need to say?
One of the things, it was, I was just going to get to that. Does the planning board need their own secretary, secretary?
Secretary.
Secretary within the planning board? If, if the land use department is providing one, or, I mean, should somebody be an appointed secretary?
Yes, yes, and yes. So. Usually, the boards have at least the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. Now, if you're, if, if you're providing an outside source as a secretary, that person takes the minutes and provides them to you. The way we do it down in Waterboro is they have a secretary that is appointed as part of the board, but we also have a staff secretary that actually takes the minutes. And the secretary from the board merely is the first line of defense of reading the minutes and making any changes before they get to the board for approval, and just says, you know, I've read the minutes and, and I don't see any errors or omissions. That doesn't mean, other board members may not have any issues to bring up, but it just provides that second level of scrutiny against the minutes. Also, the other thing is that it depends on the depth of detail that your minutes are. I can tell you in one community, you know, they have fairly complicated issues, and their minutes are verbatim, and they go on for 40 or 50 pages, which, it is ridiculous. And actually, today with recording and other possibilities, what we have been suggesting, and I've moved one town from, I wouldn't say they were the verbatim type of minutes, but they were fairly lengthy minutes, to merely the title of the application that's in front of you, and then some very brief comments about it, any actions that were taken, who the motions were, who the seconds were, what the vote was. That's all you're required to have for minutes.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, even if you go on and say, you know, Shirley said X, Y, and Z, unless it's really important to the discussion you're having, you don't need to have that.
Shirley is sitting on the tape.
Yeah, exactly. And that's the thing today, most communities are recording their, their meetings, and if someone wants to file an appeal, they can just go to the tape in order to get, you know, a stenographer to sit down and, and type verbatim minutes if they need them for the courts.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a question for us. It's in our bylaws that I'll be an executive secretary.
Right.
It's not a should we have or not we're supposed to, unless we want to change the bylaws, which were written in. Trying to be something good with James.
18, yeah, 2018.
Yep. So the other, the other part of that question was regarding the role of the chairman and the vice chairman. And I do have another town's ordinance with me because I'm going to be going there shortly, not tonight, but shortly after this. The chairman, basically, the chairman's function is a voting member, just like anybody else on the board, but they, they control the meeting. They control, you know, who speaks when, and, and how the meeting flows. The vice chair, the only thing it says in many sets of bylaws for vice chair is that they shall run the meeting in the absence of the chair.
And for the chair in his or her absence.
There you go. Yep. Yep. And that's 99.9% of, you know, bylaws for planning board mean, planning board, planning boards, excuse me. So there aren't a lot of, you know, it's not overthinking. You don't need to think, you know, well, he's the vice chair, what are all of his responsibilities? The only responsibility they got is running the meeting in the absence of the chair. Otherwise, they're a voting member, just like everyone else on the board. Okay, as, as director of planning, other than presenting a completed application and providing them with additional information upon request, what other roles does the position take on? As it relates to the planning board, not a lot. You know, you're, you're the person that meets with the applicant. Usually, what the planning director is going to do as it relates to a development submission is basically send the message to the applicant ahead of time. You know, you need to submit this information. You know, I don't think that the planning board in a particular case is, is not going to want to waive X, Y, and Z. You're really the, the spokesperson for the board, and you're thinking about, you know, what, where is the board coming from generally with, with submissions, and be that spokesperson. Doesn't mean that this board may, for whatever reason, take a different tact in public meeting on a particular issue. on a particular issue, but you're the first line of defense as the planning director on that, and there's, there's really not another role unless you're asked to write reports.
So, now that you're saying that, so, one of the things that was requested of me was, one of our applicants provided us with an application that hasn't been found complete yet, and even though they've come to the meeting and have numerously, number of times been told what they needed to do.
Yep.
Their gripe is that they were never provided a formal written statement of what they needed, even though they were told numerous times over and over and over again.
So, usually, that information, that comes back to that checklist, I'm gonna send you, I'll make a note, send you that, but that comes to that submission checklist, and whether it's you or it's this board says, here's what you need to submit, short of a waiver, then that's what they ought to be submitting, but you're also not the be-all, end-all, this board is the be-all, end-all, because they're the ones that vote, and they're the ones that are the only decision-makers in the room. You, as a code officer or a planning, planning person, you're merely providing guidance as best you can.
But here's the, the front door, too.
Yes.
We need a completed application, we need the checklist followed, and if they're not gonna provide something, they can overtly say on the application they're applying for a waiver, but otherwise, what's on the checklist needs to be provided.
Correct, absolutely.
But they find the application complete, not me.
I was gonna say.
No, exactly.
Yeah.
But the front door should at least say, whether it's good or not, or acceptable or not, they should say, okay, they submitted, you know, a parking ticket as their traffic plan.
So, you know, I, I write lots of memos for planning boards in review of projects, and at the end, I usually say, the recommendation is to find the application complete, set a date for a public hearing, and a sidewalk if needed, and, you know, conditions or recommendations will follow. Just because I'm recommending that it be found complete, doesn't mean that you folks are gonna agree with that.
Absolutely.
And you can still make that determination that they haven't submitted, it gets back to the whole issue of, they can submit something and say, well, I've submitted it, so it's complete, or they can submit something that just doesn't even straight-face test it, and then you can say, this, this doesn't meet that, it's not complete. But unless your ordinance says that the planning staff or the code enforcement officer shall find the application complete before it gets to the board, then it's your, it's your responsibility to do that, and he can only do, you know, the best job he can in saying, you know, yes, everything's here, you could find, you could find the application complete, but it's still you guys.
Exactly, it's our role to do that.
Yes, absolutely.
When it's very clear that things on the checklist aren't in the package, it's not complete.
Yes, that if, if things blatantly.
It's not complete.
If things blatantly are not there, for example, because it's, it's a, it's a big thing, you ask for a stormwater study, you know, and it's usually yay thick, and they don't submit a stormwater study, then, you know, the code officer does have the ability to say, I'm not giving this to the planning board, you guys need to provide that, you know, until you provide that, this is not complete enough to go to the planning board.
Right. Agree.
Yeah.
That's, again, where the checklist come in very handy.
Correct, absolutely, that is a, that is a savior for both parties. Let's see, if an ordinance doesn't come out and say something is or isn't allowed, how does the board address that without legal implication? Can you be a little more specific?
Like the tiny houses.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of times where some.
We had nothing in ordinance about tiny houses, and then the state says, oh, tiny houses are allowed, and where single-family residences are allowed.
Yep.
We hadn't adopted anything.
Yep.
But we didn't say, no tiny houses, we just didn't say anything.
So, in a case like that, excuse me, and there's another, the house, the housing bill that was just passed is another one that you're gonna need to deal with. In the case of like the tiny houses, the state law says a municipality shall, so you don't have any choice, wherever it says shall, you shall.
Yeah.
That may not be a good example for what you're trying to ask for the question, but whether you have an ordinance or not, if the state law says you shall do this municipality, then you have to. Now, I just created a tiny home ordinance for Agonquit, where I have done a lot of work for like eight or nine years. It, it, excuse me, it allows tiny homes, and it's because it says the municipality shall, but we establish certain standards, so, for example, down there, a tiny house must be, or shall be, on a foundation or a frost wall, they can't just roll them into town like a, like a fifth wheel, or a tag-along, and set it up for less than six months, and pull the plug and drive away before anybody can be assessed taxes, you know, six months down the road. So, someone can have a tiny home that meets the state's tiny home definition, but it has to be on a full foundation or frost wall, so that it's a permanent structure, but, you know, regardless, the law says you shall.
So, that, that got passed, you were saying?
The tiny home law?
No.
Oh, the housing bill?
The housing.
Yes, it did.
Well, we'll get to that, yeah, to stick with.
Sure.
The original question, that maybe tiny homes wasn't the best example, so, yeah, I mean.
If you're talking about a use.
Yeah.
I don't know, let's say a sawmill, and someone's in a, in a really rural area and they want to do a sawmill, if the ordinance, if the use table does not explicitly call out sawmills, they're not allowed. If there's something in the, in the use table that says, use is similar to those listed above, then it may be allowed, it might be a discretionary call, starting with the code officer, and then getting to you folks, that's a sticky wicket because it's, it's a judgment call, but from a use category standpoint, if it's not listed, it's not permitted.
I guess that's kind of like why we have gardening in the land use chart.
Yeah.
That kind of idea where we want, I don't know who put it in there or why it's in there, but, you know, it's in there, and so.
Right.
It's permitted.
Right, I struggle with things like that, it doesn't have to be gardening, I have one ordinance that I work with, and, and there are things like horticulture of wild blueberries. They're wild blueberries, so you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna require someone to get a permit of some sort to go out in a field and rake your blueberries? I don't think so, it's more about a use that's going to be established, a business that's gonna be established, but if they're not listed, they're not permitted.
Right, even if it's kind of a process, like, it's, it's hard to say, like, maybe it's just a process that's associated with another use.
Yep.
But it, but it's not the same, it's different, you know what I mean, then, then don't we have.
If it's a process associated with another use, if the use is permitted, chances are that process is accessory to that use.
So, if it's not accessory to the use, then it's.
Not permitted.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, that answers the question, right? I think.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yep, interesting question on the next one, does the planning board have the authority to dangle a carrot in front of an applicant? No, you do not, no, no.
Well, it just came back to.
No, that was not me, I can tell you that one now.
I just used, I didn't realize he was gonna write, he was gonna read it out loud, like, that was the whole, require someone to do something, if, require someone for this condition.
Yep.
If you only do this.
Yep, no, there's, you, that would be like a quid pro quo, if you, if you give me this, we'll allow you to do that, can't do that.
Yeah.
It's, if, if you want them to do something, you condition them in making them do it, period, you don't give them anything in return.
I didn't realize he was gonna read it.
Sorry, I just, but, yeah, they're, the boards, boards are not allowed to have any kind of like quid pro quo.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Yep, yep, if you feel you need to put a condition on them, I mean, that's, quite frankly, you know, there's nothing to read, but it's, that's like bribery.
Yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't particularly, yeah.
No, I know, I know, but it's, that's the blatant way of saying, it's, you know, if you want to put a condition on someone, you put a condition on them, period. Yep. Um, I think that's all that there were for questions per se, unless you folks have more questions.
I actually have one, we did a, we have a tiny home ordinance going before the town in June.
Yep.
And you just piqued my interest, and this isn't, this is kind of off topic.
Sure.
But you said Agonquit said they have to be on a foundation, yet the state definition says it has to be, what is the term?
Chassis.
On a chassis, so how do they get around that?
They got around that because you can, municipalities can be more restrictive than state law, can't be less restrictive, so, what they're saying is, you know, the state's saying they can be on a chassis, and the municipality's saying, nope, you need to be, you need to be a, a full-founded, or a founded structure, it's more restrictive than the state law.
Keep that in mind when we have the next discussion.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
That's interesting, because that's a way to keep them out.
Um, it's not as much keeping them out as much as it is making them a permanent structure, so that, again, so they're not, yeah, so they're not pulling out prior to a six-month time clock where they're gonna have to pay a property tax, and it's also, you know, if, I'm not a tiny home fan favorite, you know, and they are a certain lifestyle that some people have, but really, when it gets down to it, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, what is the difference between a tiny home and a fifth wheel or a tag-along? So someone can pull up a fifth wheel on their property and, you know, plug it into the, to the electrical outlet and stay there for four months, or have a relative stay there and then unplug it and disappear, tiny homes on chassis can do the same, you know.
But there's septic issues, they have to.
Well, there's, there's, they will make an argument to that, and in fact, that's part of the ordinance that I developed with Agonquit, is that they have to have a septic system. Their argument is, is that they, they use composting toilets, eat septic systems, so another way of making them permanent is to require them to have a septic system.
Yeah.
Yep. And don't forget, tiny homes by definition are no larger than 400 square feet, so there is a gap in your building code, do you use me back here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there's, there's a gap, and it's not, not by any other reason, other than tiny homes are defined as being no larger than 400 square feet, but a residential unit has to be 860, so there's a gap in there.
It's a version of an accessory dwelling unit, though, which is a different.
Well, that's, that's gonna be a whole other issue, and, but municipalities can, it says, I don't, I won't get into that whole discussion, but the state law, as drafted, I was just rereading it today, says that an ADU shall be no smaller than 190 square feet, and that a municipality can establish the upper limit on the square footage. I work with Arundel, I'm, I'm actually their planner, I have an office there for them, their ADU ordinance right now says that an accessory dwelling unit is no more than 50% of the square footage of the primary, primary house, or 800 square feet, whichever is more, so they don't even get to the 860 as a, as a dwelling unit.
They were no greater than 800.
Correct. I mean, so there are things you can do, it's, you gotta really read that, the law, and go, okay, what, you know, what are the parameters that are being established here? Do you want to talk about the ADU, the new law?
Um, I'd like to hear about the new multifamily home, whatever the heck that law is that just passed.
Sure, yeah, that's, I call it, that's the ADU law.
And in particular, the language that says in, what was the terminology, you gotta dwell in growth areas or growth.
Yes, yes.
Who defines, and what is the definition of a growth area?
Yep, it's very specific, and that's one of the things that I need to do in my position, is really dive into this and figure out how every town is, could or be impacted. So, the way the law is written, you are correct, what it cites is MRSA 384369, I believe, is the citation, 1 and 2 are A and B, what that establishes is if you have a comprehensive plan that is consistent, been found consistent with the state law, and has a growth zone.
Yeah, we do, I just don't have my complaint in front of me.
So.
I think it's really similar to the transition.
So, ADUs would be allowed there, or allowed anywhere you have public water and sewer. If you don't have public water and sewer, then it defers back to your growth zone in your consistent plan. Many towns don't have plans that are consistent because they chose not to go for consistency, so they do not, they do not get impacted by that part of the state law. And some towns that I deal with also don't have sewer and water, or have sewer and water but are not in a growth zone.
Well, a lot of places, our residents are very concerned about growth.
Right, if it's, if it's a plan that's been found consistent by DAC or the State Planning Office, then there is a growth, there should be a growth area in your future land use narrative or your future land use map.
I think it's, Bernie missed the transition zone, and I think that's all the village,
The other thing, while you're looking at that, I'll talk a little bit, the other thing is that if you have a growth cap.
We do.
ADUs do not count against the growth cap.
We, I was told that they do.
Nope, state law, the final version of the state law says that they.
That's what just came in?
You cannot.
So, if growth permits are required, an ADU does not require a growth permit?
That's correct.
And that was in this new bill that just got passed?
Yep. I should've, I thought we were gonna dive into that tonight, I should've brought it with me, sorry guys, sitting on my desk.
No, that's fine, I'll, I'll find it and print it up for these guys, too.
2003, LD 2003.
91, there were three growth areas.
And.
LDT?
LD.
LD.
2003.
Yeah.
On the state's, there you go, yep, is that, is that the signed version, is that?
Uh, the municipal.
Okay, because what you find, if you go to the state, state website and go to legislature, it'll ask you to LDs, and you bring up LD 2003, and then there's a series of printouts, and it's, it's the one that was, it will tell you, basically, it was the one that was signed into law, because there were several amendments that occurred along the way.
Then you said you were gonna do your due diligence not to get it passed.
We tried real hard, we tried real hard.
Jesus, there's 15 pages of amendments on that thing.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
So the, a little bit about that bill we had talked about last time you were here.
Mm-hmm.
How does that, how did that play out, cuz pretty much anywhere, uh, a single fam, anywhere a dwelling is allowed, you can have up to four ADUs on one property?
No, that was changed as part of all the amendments that they have. So if you have a vacant parcel, I have a table, I'll send you the table.
Two and a half times the base density.
That's only if it's in like an apartment complex and someone is doing a, an affordable housing project where they're going to guarantee to the municipality that um if their rental units there, the cost of the rental units are not above 80% of the median household income.
Yeah.
And um they have to be deed restricted for 30 years to continue to stay affordable housing units. Um, if they do, if a developer does that, um, then they get two and a half times the density of the zone that they're locating in. But, but on single, on single parcels, the two issues that apply are that if there, if, if there's a vacant lot and it can't be made vacant, it has to be a vacant lot as of today. Um, you're allowed to have a duplex. So someone can walk in tomorrow, even though you may have a single-family zone and want a building permit for a duplex. And then they can request to have two ADUs for that. One would be attached and the other would be standalone, standalone freestanding structure.
So right now, we don't allow um ADUs within the shoreline zoning?
Nope, and, and, and you will not have to, under the state law, it says that shoreline zoning.
Is exempt, okay.
Yep.
Because that would be a, a big blow to have every, not every camp out there, but anybody on, anybody saying, okay, I wanna add an ADU to their, and then you're now dealing with two families on one lot and your septics are just, yeah, yeah.
Right, well, they're still, they're still required, no matter where ADUs are allowed, um, they're still required under the law to be able to um show that they can meet the septic system design, because don't forget.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
That goes first, yeah.
Septic systems are based on numbers of beds, beds.
But the, so, uh, so right now, so in my ordinance, if somebody wants to put a multifamily unit on their property, they have to meet the standards, so if it's a, if it's in rural district, we use two acres, 250 feet of road frontage.
Yep.
Now, if they wanna put something greater than 800 square feet, that's constitutes a multifamily, not an ADU. So if it's, that would, they would have to have four acres plus 350 road, road, road frontage, not 500, but it would be 350.
If, well, it's getting a little dicey there, but if, if, if it's not an ADU and they want a totally um freestanding home that you're gonna buy, um, then you would do whatever you do today um for requirements. It's only accessory dwelling units, but you're going to need to, between now and, and July of 23, next July, um, you'll wanna develop some performance standards for ADUs, again, the square footage type of thing. If you currently say that your ADUs can't be over 800 square feet, um, then um, and someone wants to put an ADU on their property, you cannot modify or enlarge the lot size requirements or the setback requirements. Um, ADUs are also, under the state law, um, are not recognized, how do I wanna say this? They're, the single-family home that may be existing on the parcel will still be recognized as a single-family home, even if there are two ADUs in the single-family home. It's not recognized as a multifamily situation.
So right now, we currently only allow one ADU on a property. But now we have to allow more, you have to allow minimum of, a maximum of two?
Yes. Yes, one would need to be in the home or attached to the home and the other could be freestanding. I'll send you that chart, it'll, it's, it's helpful.
Definition of a duplex?
Well, it has to be greater than 800 square feet. So if it's, if it's under 800 square feet, it's considered an ADU. If it's greater than 800 square feet, it's considered a multifamily, which would be a duplex if it's two.
Right.
Two things.
And, and a duplex would still be allowed wherever your duplex is, if you allow duplex.
Well, right now, right now, we have to, you have to meet um the minimum requirements for lot size.
Yes.
For two, for two single-family dwelling.
And you would still be allowed to do that.
It's cuz we're not, we're not modifying it after this law came out, we already had this enacted.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not in the worst situation.
No, no. I mean, I haven't analyzed your ordinance totally for that purpose, but it doesn't sound like you're, you're in all that bad, bad of a situation.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is going to, um.
I did find a part where it says does not count against your growth permit. It's like 4360.
Yeah, yeah.
When, and this bill goes into effect as of, when it was signed?
It goes into effect 30 days after it was signed, cuz it was not an emergency legislation. It started out as an emergency bill, um, and then it was taken off the emergency, so 30 days after it's signed.
And it's, when was it signed, just this week?
Uh, yeah, Wednesday. Um, and then, um, you have, as a municipality, you have until July of next year, 23, to create an ordinance to address all of these issues. Um, and in the meantime, there is a section in there where there's probably going to be rulemaking um done by the Department of Economic and Community Development who's overseeing the law, DECD, um, and they're gonna have to do some rulemaking, which may or may not change some of the details in what the law says you can do. So I mean, you're not, you know, you're not having to enact something tomorrow. You don't have to have a special town meeting this fall unless you, you know, draft something and wanna get it in place, but you will need to have um something in place by next July, next town, next regular town meeting. And one of the things I'm doing in my capacity is, um, I'm probably going to have a couple of the planners um from around the region into my office and we're gonna sit and go bullet list by bullet list and try to figure out if there's some sort of a, an ordinance, you know, a draft ordinance that we can provide to people or um what are the bullet lists of issues that every town's gonna need to deal with? So.
Yeah, no, that'd be some good, some good help and assistance when, when having to draft something.
Yeah.
It's something to get the comprehensive plan updated.
Yeah. So can we, can we restrict it from parts of the town outside the shoreline zone?
Um, no. If you have a comprehensive plan that has a growth area, um, then, then the answer is no. Um, consistent comprehensive plan, then it says every lot, every lot where a resident, single, every lot where residential units are allowed shall have.
So we ha, and admittedly, yeah, I don't either.
It has to be updated.
What happens if, yeah.
What's that, your comprehensive plan?
Yeah, if it needs to be.
How, how old is it?
2005.
So it, it's, it's due for an update?
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't have to be a whole new plan per se, it can be an update, although it's always a question of what's the difference between an update and a brand-new plan, because all the data's gonna change and, you know, people's attitudes will probably have changed and, um, you know, everything else along the way. Um, but at some point, you're going to want to consider doing that.
Yeah, so we, we, it appears, I haven't heard that, I was just scanning that. I missed some of what you said, so this may be a dumb question, but um, it appears we identified the village uh district as our growth area.
Yep.
So in compliance with the new law, we would have to allow it in the village area.
At least, but the way the law is written, because you have a growth area in a consistent plan, every lot that you allow, single-family homes in every zone, you shall allow.
Even outside that area?
Yep.
Dear Lord.
Yep, yeah, well, and, you know, as I said the last time, I mean, one of our issues is, it's, it, the state has worked for years and years and years to create, you know, smart growth and, and growth to occur in, in areas where there already is growth, um, and this is now an issue that's going to create a lot of sprawl. Um, and, and, you know, as a planner who has been involved in this state for God knows too many years, um, it's going against the grain of, of what um we talk about for smart growth. And the, the problem with that is, is that nowhere in the law does, other than the, the um multifamily apartment complexes, nowhere in the law does it say that those ADUs must be affordable housing and what that target market rate is for affordable housing. So anybody that can afford to build an ADU, um, or two ADUs, can put two more units on their parcel. You know, there's nothing that says the market's going to drive those, those costs down so that they're affordable for everybody. Um, and there's nothing in the law that says they must be, they must meet an affordable housing target. So it's potential to create a boom for the housing industry, but not necessarily to address affordable housing. So.
Can accessory dwelling unit be rented out?
Yes, absolutely, yep, yep.
Well, that would certainly be helpful if you came up with that.
Yeah, it's gonna take some time, but we will be drafting something at some point here.
So you're gonna put those, um, your zoning books to, um, to print here soon then?
Now that the bill is out, yes, um, that's gonna get incorporated into the document and then we'll be going to print.
Okay.
Yep.
I gotta call your, your office and get some more for these guys?
Marion, yep.
Yep.
Um, and I also wanna send you table.
Yep.
For ADUs.
Do you see this Marion often, every day?
Oh, yeah, she's our, she's our.
Can you have her put, um, one, two, three, four, six books on there? Six additional ones, cuz I had ordered, ordered, put two on order.
Yep.
Please and thank you.
Yes.
That way, if I forget, like I always do, it's not.
Yep, no, we're, we're, we're taking pre-orders at this point, so we have a head count on where we're at, not a problem. Anything else for tonight? Lot of information, again.
Very helpful. There's nothing about um ADUs and cluster subdivisions?
The only, no.
Specifically in there?
Nope, there is, there's nothing about ADUs. The only places that ADUs, if, if the town has to allow ADUs under the law, the only place that it says you can't do ADUs is if your development or your house has deed restrictions or an HOA. Um, and chances are the deed restriction of the HOA probably says you can't have a um in-law apartment or anything of that sort in them, I live in an HOA and I can't, I couldn't have an ADU put on my property if I wanted to.
So if we had subdivision applications before us, we could, you think it would be appropriate to request that they put a condition of not having EDUs?
I don't know that you can legally, um.
Request it, we could ask them to, I guess.
You, yeah, I mean, you could ask them if they're considering that, um, but you can't make them deed restricted in that sense or do an HOA.
We can't legally restrict anything with that.
Not really.
Yeah, right, just, you know, cuz I was thinking about cluster subdivisions and.
Yep, I know.
The implications of having three dwelling units in each one of these smaller lots.
Yep, it's very possible, possible that that could happen.
Right.
Yep.
But they could, they could be restricted if they chose to.
Sure. Yep.
Interesting.
Yep, there's nothing in the law that says a developer cannot deed restrict a property or provide or, or create an HOA. Um, and then they can, you know, basically not allow those types of units in that development.
Any questions?
I told you to write them down.
Well, don't, don't think just because I walk out of here tonight that you can't ask those questions at some point.
No, something about tabling, like you could table something and the next meeting, could I table the same thing? We could just pass it down the line, is, was that it?
I don't.
I think it was something like that.
Um.
It was the difference, the definitional difference of tabling versus delay or.
Postponing.
Postponing, that's what it was.
Yep, um.
I mean, could we just go down the line and postpone it or table it?
You, you.
I think that was kind of like a, it's an odd question.
You would need, you would need to have a reason, um, but there's nothing that says you can't do that.
Well, like you say, if Pat's sort of good with someone's information and I'm thinking, well, geez, I might need a little more, I can say.
That's a debate for the board to have and for vote to be taken, you know? So if you make a motion to table because you don't believe that they've provided additional information, um, there's no discussion on a tabling motion. So then, you know, you just have to vote. And if the vote passes, it's tabled, if the vote fails, you're back to work.
Right. That's my only odd question.
Okay.
I think.
Well, anytime, you know, anytime, you know, you folks have any questions or whatnot, it's easier just go through Jason and he can contact me and I can provide answers or try. Or I'd be happy to come up anytime.
So here's a question for you before we, so right now, we have, um, so we have conditional use applications, we have site plan review applications.
Yep.
In our conditional use applications, we don't require traffic studies, but in order to, in order to get to a conclusion, can we require a traffic study?
If the, if the use is something that generates a lot of traffic or is near what you would consider a dangerous intersection or something like that, sure, of course.
Good.
Because one of the things that this board does in general is you have to make judgment on the health, safety and welfare of the community.
Well, that's kind of why I had asked the question, can we kind of, when we do a conditional use application, can we kind of mold, like mend some of the, some of the criteria together? Because some of the things in some of these projects need more looking into.
Well, I, I, I think that, you know, in general.
I mean, I'm not saying just say, okay, we're not gonna go.
Right.
Conditional use, we're gonna go site plan, but.
Right.
We can require more studies or more information to come to a determination.
Regardless of whether it's in a checklist or not, absolutely, if it, if, you know, you can really um justify that it's germane to that project for whatever reason, um, you can ask for it, absolutely.
I just want, I'm just wanting to make sure you clarified that.
Yep, yep.
We also had some um questions about, say, we were having this meeting tonight, we, we wanna discuss a a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
We're not really discussing the application, um, but I mean, we're not supposed to discuss an application unless the applicant or applicant representative is present.
Correct.
But we, but you feel like we could discuss scheduling of a sidewalk without them present? But we, but you feel like we could discuss scheduling of a sidewalk without them present?
If you're, if you're not going to discuss...
Scheduled, but
Right.
The applicant didn't meet the timeline for us to get information to be ready for the sidewalk.
So if you're only going to discuss, um, you know, what date you can, um, do the sidewalk to have Jason contact them and see if they're available, um, I would limit that conversation to that. Um, but not discuss anything to do with the merits of the project.
Right, not the merits, but to be able to conduct the sidewalk, we need information. So the discussion would be, do we have that information so we can conduct the sidewalk? It's a yes or no question. If it's yes, let's schedule.
And a lot of times, um, well, um, yeah. A, a, a lot of times, if it's a sidewalk, it's, it's, um, usually, um, please make sure to let them know that they need to, um, stake the corners of the buildings or central line the road. Um, if they haven't done that and you get out there, then there's no sense in having the sidewalk. But that's the type of stuff that, that Jason could communicate to them that, you know, we're gonna try to do the sidewalk a next date, but you need to make sure the center line of the road is, is staked and the corners of the building are staked, or whatever the situation might be. Um, I think that's fine, but I, you know, just don't get into the merits of...
No, it's not the merits, it's just staking and the survey needs to be done so we can see what we can see.
I gotta make sure that we have, I have to meet the timeline to get it out to public notice too.
Sure, right. Seven days?
Ten, ten days, I think we do, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I, I just wouldn't advise going much further than that.
No, I think it was more of a discussion of what to do with the, everything.
And we need to set the date.
And then setting the date, you know?
Right. Do we have to wait for the applicant to be present to set the next date, I guess?
Um, I, I I guess I'm gonna be very liberal in my determination and say, you don't have to. Um, they don't have to be here for you to set that date. Um, as provided they can, um, be available for that.
Mm-hmm. And what if they're not happy with their date, then does that become an issue?
Um, it becomes an issue, yes, sure, because they need to be present during the sidewalk. So I mean, you can set the date.
Well, no, like, so if we, if, if they wanted it tomorrow, but we say, well, how about four weeks from now, and they're not happy with that, that date, so, well, I wasn't present to, to schedule the site, you know, to plead my case or something like that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's more, it, it's more about, you know, well, you know, we think we can be available on, you know, whatever the date is. Um, and they say, well, we want it tomorrow. No, you know, we need to, we need to post it
Yeah.
and advertise, and we need at least 10 days, so therefore...
And we need the appropriate information
Correct.
to do the sidewalk.
Correct.
It's pretty black and white. It's not the merits, it's just, do we have what we need to make an effective sidewalk?
Right. Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm gonna put my neck on the line for you, if you, if you will, and say, I think you can, you know, you can do that. Just don't get no means.
Just don't start discussing what we need.
Right.
No, just...
Yes, correct.
The survey of the lands, so we have something to look at. And the stakes that we already told them we wanted to see.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah.
Yes or no?
Yeah. Because it is hard, because sometimes you, you, you know, wanna discuss a, an applicant when they're not present, just because it's...
Easier?
Well, it's convenient too for just, uh, you may have just gotten information, but you sometimes it's easier to review information with just the board when the applicant, you know, no, I know, I, I, I'm on board with those.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, I just, I, I have to do that.
Yeah.
I'm kind of obligated to do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm not your attorney, what you guys do is what you do, I just, no, do not do that. You know? Yep, yep. Great, well, any questions along the way, just, you know, give me a holler or and come back up, I can, whatever you, whatever you wanna do.
All right, very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Very welcome. Yeah.
I'll be impressed, I'm sure we'll, we'll bring some stuff with you here, I'm sure we'll...
All right, well, I'll send you that stuff and then...
Appreciate it, thank you.
Won't be tomorrow.
No, that's fine.
There you go, PJ day, huh?
You guys wanna talk about that or?
I think we should say, well... I think we have to, we're trying to...
Have, we, we came so quick.
Right. Yeah, postponed it.
Yeah, postponed.
I postponed it, I ran that in the paper, I ran...
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, uh, I did it on, I did, I posted the notice on everything that we had, um, online and in the paper. Um, now it's, now it's pretty much, when do you guys wanna do it? I know, obviously, this is very clear, once the information's in, do you wanna, so the...
I think we should wait till the 5th to...
Because I had, so if we wait to the 5th, in order to make...
We have the information.
Right, in order to, to get it out to public notice, the 5th won't make it for the 14th. I mean, it'll be nine days, but it'll run.
That's funny.
So then it'll be pushed up to the 21st.
Yeah.
Um, well, I'm just saying, no, I'm just saying, if we, if he comes into the 5th, on the 5th, and says, okay, the stuff will be ready on the 10th, I don't meet that 10 days, is kind of where it is, I think. And that's, and so that puts it, and I, I miss why...
We don't get the papers we need on the 5th.
I don't think he will, he, I think by...
We need to wait until the meeting that we get the papers we need to make the schedule of the sidewalk.
Right, that's what I was...
I think we're at, I mean, we can hold them, but like you were saying, they probably won't have them by the 5th.
I don't know, I, I don't know, all I know is in the email, he stated that it'll, the, it'll be completed paperwork and everything will be flagged no later than the 10th. That's what they left him. Um, and that's what he followed up with. Um, so I feel that the sidewalk should be done after the 10th, when it's, when it's all done. And, and I'm in the same, I'm, I'm fine with that, I got no issue with that. My thing was this is, did we wanna try to schedule it for the 14th, or do we wanna wait till the 21st, or do we wanna wait till the June?
Well, we don't know.
Right, it's getting the paperwork.
I don't think we're gonna make the 14th though.
Yeah.
But that's just spec, you know, really, I mean...
But if you can get the paperwork in, but, well, so that, well, like I said, that really puts me in a pickle because it doesn't get, meet the 10-day criteria, and I don't know if it has to... And I just don't know.
Well, we just can't make that date, that's, yeah, it's a big project, that's all, you know?
Yeah, and you guys, yeah, you, you guys wanna look at the, the study?
Yeah.
And all that stuff, I get that.
Well, that's when the study's done, right, is the 10th.
So I wouldn't even put him on the, the agenda for the 5th unless we're gonna, yeah. But we, like, we won't have any...
In the last email I had with him, I had said, if they don't, if they don't schedule a tentative date, then maybe you should come in on the 5th and try to schedule something, but if we don't have information.
Yeah, I would just take him off the agenda for the 5th.
And do we?
Just to save, save us going through that and save them bringing 10 people to talk to us and then us having to tell them we have nothing there yet.
Yeah.
But I don't know, what else do we have for the 5th?
Just the...
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
Um, I have a cast conditional use application on the podium right now for a, um, uh, auto repair shop that, um, on Fox's Ridge, over by Blueberry Hill, something like that.
That's in the federal or...
I'm not even sure, I just know that, um...
What is the public hearing?
Uh, the ordinances.
Your, the ordinances.
Oh, are we doing that again?
You have to do a second one, but it requires...
But...
I meant to get that stuff for...
Right, do we have any information, can you tell us?
Well, that'll lead up to the, to the public hearing.
Yeah, um, no, 'cause I don't even have it, I didn't even knock it in.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't, so we don't really have any other, any applicants?
No, it was just this one, and they were, they wanted to try to get onto that, um... And you got, and the person who's representing them is, uh, Mike Demers. It's one of his...
What, that, this one being those papers over there?
Yeah, that Ashley brought up, in case you guys wanted to look at some of them. But it's, uh, they don't have, um, site plan, and I asked, you know, are you gonna give them a site plan, he goes, well, there's nothing changing. So I was just, whatever, it's up to you guys, if you guys wanna look at it and see what it is. Um, and, and
Yeah, we can...
And see if you wanna see it Thursday or, or require more information from him. You know, there wasn't a site...
Well, that, that's where you can just require him to get a site plan and get a new document and then doesn't even need to make it ask to make the decision. Because I mean, I...
I just didn't know if it made it, because he's not adding any new structures, so does he need a site plan? He's using an existing garage. That's kind of why I, I, you know, I was just like, all right, well, I'm gonna find out what they, what you guys wanna deal with, because I'm, you know, he's not adding any more pavement, he's not adding anything.
This is auto repair, so...
I think he might be adding a small addition, but not much, it was, uh...
Well, I think we should take that, so we can read it.
Sure.
He can be on there, and then I think we probably should make the decision at the meeting of what we want.
More information?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I hear what you're saying, you're saying, okay, that makes sense. And that's right, it's something that should be the board's decision to say,
You want more?
Yeah, we want more. So...
But I don't know, do you wanna do it on the 5th?
If they're, yeah.
Well, if there's time, there's time, if there's not, then you push it up to the next one, that's, we're allowed to do that. Obviously, I know you guys don't like to do that.
Well, are we allowed to know how the, the selectmen handled their ordinances and stuff?
I, I'll get you that information, yeah, I wanted to do that for today.
How the selectmen, the financial voted on the...
I'm not 100% positive, but what I think is, they didn't support solar.
Which one?
Solar. But they supported tiny house, uh, they supported rentals, that's the Warren Finance.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I don't, I'm not 100% on the selectmen, um, but I think it was right in the same ballpark.
They like most of them.
For what reason, do you know?
I remember sitting with one of the Warren Finance members, um, and they said that, um, something to do, one of the reasons was them bringing people back in in five years, which was, to me, I tried, I explained it to that person why it's in there, you know? Um, to, to reassess the, the escrow, or, or whatever it is, and I explained it to her, why. Um, and then it was like, oh. Makes sense, but it doesn't, I don't know if, if that was being said because, you know? Either way, um, I think both of them didn't, both committees didn't support it, I'm not 100% positive. Also, one of the members of this was told me that they didn't like the wording for the... Uh, they didn't like the wording for, um, cannot be visible from any great pond and stuff like that, because what happens if somebody, if you can't see it today and then a year down the road, your, your butter cuts all those trees down, and then you can see it.
That's why we tried to soften that language.
Well, I, right, and I, I 100% agree with you, and I, and I made that point, and that's why now we're back in this situation.
Right. I, I'm not sure I want to even play in, in making ordinance changes. The, the clicks and the, it's just ridiculous.
Yeah, it was, this is the hardest, hardest ordinance changes I've seen, and we're not done yet. I mean, it's not usually like that, usually we...
I say, to heck with it, let them get the damn, uh...
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan done, then we'll fix the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause next year, you mean, you wanted to play with the, the mineral extraction, so that's gonna be some...
I'm not sure I wanna beat my head against that wall, give them the support of planning board.
That's, that's right, now, the planning board can be cohesive and understanding how to use what we've got in there. I think we can work with that, it's just, some of those questions we gotta answer tonight, and you know, those are illuminating to our projects that we have going, ongoing. You know, like, if it's not in there, it's not permitted. Which, I mean, that's, it's nice to get, you know, a
Professional opinion.
Professional answer on that.
It's also written on page 14, well, in the chart, it says if it's not in, in the chart, it's not permitted. It was a statement right at the beginning of that.
Right. Right, and then we go into, unless it's accessory to accessory, accessory to conditional uses. So we have to determine if it's accessory or not.
I know, you have, you also have like use though, it's, if it's a like use.
It's not a like use, that would be the same thing as accessory almost, you know, that kind of goes with it, this is...
Yeah, you're gonna, that's gonna be a battle, that's gonna really blow.
Well, we just got our, our orders tonight to point to the same thing we've already decided. So, I mean, it's good, I think it's good we got that input, that the, the board members, I kind of wish Bev was here to hear that too, but, um... And like, like the stormwater and stuff in the, in the checklist, it's like, we, we've had a hard time getting the applicant to give us what we need for the stormwater.
Hmm.
And, but it's right in there. I remember we struggled with that, we never end up getting anything. You know, but we need to understand as a board what, what we're, you know, what we would want as a stormwater recorder or system. In, in different sort of situations, there are all sorts of different situations.
Right.
Kind of like some degrees of... We've got coming up with the, the camp and stormwater, we need to
Right.
Think about that.
Mm-hmm.
Like, what, you know?
Um, I'm just trying to think of, did that packet, that packet didn't have a stormwater thing? I don't think, right? For that, for that camp?
No, no, they didn't.
I know that camp, but a lot of that information is just preliminary, you know, this is what I want, this is what we're doing.
Sketch plan.
Yeah, he even said that he's gonna come back
Oh, yeah.
with a, with a bunch of information.
One page really about, it was mostly
Yeah.
Almost irrelevant to what we're doing. There's a lot of information about the camp itself.
Yeah, there's some, they get a couple of months worth of work to get.
Yeah. But when, once we get it, I mean, that's, that's the one we're gonna send to the consultant.
Yeah, um...
And consider if we wanna use something mean for some of those consultants.
That's what I was, that was my next question, do we want to, um... It, it doesn't matter who, who we use, right now, you know, Lee Jay seemed very good and very informative, Ben's the same way, I mean, it comes down to is, you know, who serves in use better, I guess, and, and, and price, maybe? But it's not on the town, really, you know, it's, the, the price is on the applicant.
Right.
Um, there is a price difference between the two.
Well, we might to keep them both in the wing so that
Yes.
if we give the opinion of one, and then the board's like, I don't know if I agree with the opinion of the consultant, we can always send that particular snippet to the other one.
And I like...
I, I like that.
I, you know, he said he had traffic study, they do traffic studies and stuff like that. Right, so it'd be nice to, I mean, we can use, utilize that coming up here.
That's exactly, I have that dog here that might know, it's exactly right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the other guy is good to go through and help us with his complete, but we haven't had him do plans, right?
Well, he, so Ben Smith is, is the pla, is doing the planning for, it's, Keith McBride will not be doing that, it's, I have Ben Smith doing it, so, um...
Right, but what I'm saying is, that organization offered to provide reports and studies separate from, you know?
Yeah.
My take on what Ben does is he gives us
Yeah, I think he does his own planning.
Yeah, he says it's complete or it isn't, or they're shy of this, you need to ask for these four things. But at the end of the day, part of the, where I think we've not been as complete as we can is doing, asking for these studies that we're authorized to ask for. Like transportation, for some of these things that come in, is transportation affected? Yes, no, if it's yes, or maybe we need to go to Southern Maine and say, hey, we'd like you to do a transportation study on this, uh, thing. To tell us, you know, give us the best solution for transportation, limits on vehicles, routes, you know? That, that sort of thing.
Yeah, they might just have more resources than...
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like, you know, I don't, so they used to, you guys used Southern Maine at some point for, for a while.
Pretty years, yeah.
What happened, did something happen, or just somebody just...
There was one, we were looking at one specific application... There was one, we were looking at one specific application, and I kind of touched on this with you the other night, the two of you, and it was a subdivision application, and we turned it into Southern Maine, they came back to this kind of like one response about the shoreline zone and how it should be treated. The application, the applicant didn't really like that, so then they went back and, they, they went directly to Southern Maine, and Southern Maine gave us, gave us something else that was more lenient.
Ooh.
And we don't know, I don't know what happened exactly, why that digressed like that. You know, I preferred the previous statements about the shoreline zone and the, and the applicability of subdivisions and cluster subdivisions and in the shoreline zone and the use of the whole law and all this, and so resultantly, we, we were concerned and we ended up with a independent consultant, but it was really had to do, it was Ken who did the switch, our previous code officer. It wasn't a decision of the board, it was just kind of what happened. But that was kind of the, the last I remember dealing with him, was in that situation, and and I, I, I don't, you know, I mean...
But prior to that, you never had any issues and they worked well with you guys?
Yeah, oh yeah, and they, yeah, I mean, they would, you, it says right on the front of the comprehensive plan, prepared, it would help in Southern Maine original planning, and like they, they, like, like, like he said, that large parts of the ordinance, he can, there are people wrote them, and I mean, you can, we, you know, we have a long history with them, we still, we still pay dues to them.
Yeah, no, and they do, and that's, and that's why they are priced differently, is because they actually get money from the state and municipalities, um...
Yeah, where keeps them covered.
Right, North, North Star.
Is completely...
Yeah, they're independent.
But if they switch the decision, can't we just use the first decision anyways that they gave them?
We could, but it was just, I don't know what happened exactly, it was just... We, we, we thought, we were hoping that North Star would, would have more spine or something, but I, I don't know if that's really even how it would play out. I think Southern Maine has such good references with, with other towns, like Agunkwe and the tiny houses on foundations, and like, that's, that's the kind of information that is really helpful.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know other than us of, of a municipality down here that North Star actually deals with, they're, they're from, they're located in Gloucester, Maine, so they, they're Cumberland, they're, I think they're doing mostly Cumberland area in the north.
Yeah. Right, like the other solar thing.
It's Freeport.
From like Freeport or Falmouth, yeah, because that's their area.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I mean, it's good, I mean, he's, he can answer our questions right there, you know, there's no looking it up and calling his back, I mean, you know, he's spent, I don't know how many years doing that.
Yeah, well, that, that was an instance because experience that, that individual didn't have experience, where, um, Ben was, is experienced.
Right, but not, not like Lee J.
No, definitely not, he's got 40-plus years in him, he told me.
It's hard to beat that.
And, yeah.
So, I don't know, I, I'd like to have them both as resources, like, I don't feel like we need to pick one or the other.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not actually saying pick one or the other.
No, no, but that's...
We could bounce them off each other, ideas off each other.
We've got a couple points, you know, we gotta be careful of the applicant not paying for two, of the same thing.
And you don't want to feel that, you don't want one planner feeling that you're gonna take this decision because his is better than the other, you know, then you start, you could possibly burn a bridge.
Well, I think it depends on the question we want to ask a planner.
Yeah.
Is it appropriate to go to Southern Maine, um, or, you know, is it appropriate to go to Ben? You know, when you make that call, you go to one or the other, but they should both be available.
Then maybe if one's busy, then you have the option of...
Yeah, yeah.
It's nice to have.
I know, like, Lee J. has stated that, when I said that our meetings were on Thursday, he was happy to hear that because he doesn't have any board meeting, like, he, he's busy Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but Thursday was an available day for him.
Yeah.
So I don't, yeah.
Yeah.
I was waiting, missed your favorite time of the night, John. Well, it's good to pay for first. I know Jason tried to frame me, but I screwed up question. I'm not into bribery, just...
Must not have missed the staple. Yeah.
So if we can get to this, we can get to it after the...
Yeah, I just looked it over, um... I got this the other day, I haven't, I wasn't in at all yesterday, I really haven't had much, a lot of time to really review it. Oh, he's gonna be...
Does that lead into this?
Yes. Yes, it's one of his friends, so he told me that, that he would be coming in to represent him.
Oh, he'll present it?
Yeah.
Oh.
And so I had talked to him, I go, so did you find it complete? He said, yep. I was just like, huh, I'll look at it, and I just figured I'd just give it to you guys. More, the less was, uh, my biggest thing was the site plan, were you guys gonna be okay with that?
This thing?
Oh, so he is putting up proposed parking area for serviced vehicles.
All right, 20, uh, 2,000 square feet. Yeah, we don't want to talk about it.
Yeah, sorry, guys.
Way to open the door.
I just happened to look at it.
Yeah, we don't want to talk about it.
So...
We'll look it over and...
We'll talk about it on Thursday.
See if we have time. I like how you're trying to open that door. All right, well, Jim, this chairman, I'm looking, will you join us for a workshop? All in favor?